Lead us into Pledge of Allegiance. Gentlemen? Everyone, please rise. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation.
Be pleased to hear us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly fathers always repulse at this time to give you thanks. To give you thanks for the blessings that you bestow upon us corporately as the city of Jacksonville.
And the blessings you bestow upon us individually. We especially give thanks tonight for your protection from the devastating effects of Hurricane Dorian. We give thanks, Lord, that you looked over us in this fragile coastal region in which we live. We pray for those who were so affected, as in the Bahamas and Okra Coke. We pray that you will be with them as they begin to rebuild their lives. We pray for our service members who are serving here and around the world for their safety, their anxious families. And as always, we give our prayers for our mayor and for our council, that your guidance and direction would be with them in their deliberations. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Counsel, I entertain a motion now to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Here and not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. I'm gonna come around front for some presentations. So tonight, or this is a proclamation for Constitution Week. And I have some members, the members of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And Davis Benedict, the Children of the American Revolution, if you would join me up front, please. He really doesn't need any help. We have with us, from the Daughters of the American Revolution here, we have Mary Morgan, Evelyn Tallman, Sandra Reimers, Pam Bell, and Kathy Benedict. And Daisy Kylie, that's you, right? Also. Okay. All right. I'm very pleased to present a proclamation recognizing September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. But before we do, I want to ask Derek or Davis, Davis, right. Davis Benedict to step forward to provide a recitation of the preamble to the Constitution. Derek is a seventh grader at North Woods Park Middle School and is a member of the Children of the American Revolution. He is also chaplain of the State Chapter of the Children of the American Revolution. Davis, mic is yours.
We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America.
Good job.
Good, yeah.
Let's give him a hand. Good job. I do have the proclamation here. And I'm gonna read this, if you'll indulge me that moment here. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2019, marks the 232nd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, the mayor of the city of Jacksonville, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2019, as Constitution Week in the city of Jacksonville. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. With that, I want to present y'all with the proclamation. Who wants, who's going next up?
Evelyn.
There you go.
I'll take it, because I'm the oldest.
She is. That's the seed. But that's the best.
Well, thank you so much for keeping that tradition alive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank y'all for coming tonight, representatives of the Daughters of American Revolution. At this time, I would like to swear in someone. Fire Marshal Brian Kelly. And if Brian, and Chief Yanero, and Acting Fire Chief Sean Hayes, and any family members present, would join me up front. I would like to point out that Brian actually used to sit up here at this dais as a member of the youth council. That's been a while ago, hasn't it?
1999.
1999, okay. It's been a while.
It's been a while.
So Brian's gonna be sworn in as a fire marshal here in Jacksonville. Brian was born in Wilmington, North Carolina, and raised in Jacksonville. He graduated from Jacksonville High School and Fayetteville State University with a Bachelor of Science degree in Fire and Emergency Services Administration. Brian joined Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services on July 22nd, 2002, as a firefighter, and left the department as an Assistant Fire Marshal in 2012 to join Oslo County as the Fire Marshal for the entire county. He holds certifications as an EMT Basic, a Firefighter 1 and 2, Advanced Firefighter, Fire Officer 3, North Carolina Emergency Management Public Information Officer, Driver Operator, and Driver Operator Aerials, Fire and Life Safety Educator, Fire Instructor, Fire Inspector, National Fire Academy Juvenile Fire Center Intervention Specialist 2, and Fire Arson Investigator. So by that, you can tell that Brian's been around the block or two. So he's got a lot, brings a lot of experience back into the job here with Jacksonville. Brian and his wife Natalie, Natalie, have been married for 14 years and are proud of their children, 12-year-old Preston and eight-year-old Jackson. And y'all are gonna help with the penning, right? Okay. But first off, we're going to... Oh, you've got it. Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna do our swearing in. So Brian, if you would repeat after me, place your left hand on the bottom, raise your right. I state your name.
Aye, Brian Kelly.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be vigilant and alert.
That I will be vigilant and alert.
In performing my duties.
In performing my duties.
As the Fire Marshal of the city of Jacksonville.
In the Fire Marshal of the city of Jacksonville.
Fire and Emergency Services.
Fire and Emergency Services.
That I will not be influenced in any matter.
That I will not be influenced in any matter.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and execute.
That I will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of my office.
As the Fire Marshal of the city of Jacksonville.
As the Fire Marshal of the city of Jacksonville.
Fire Emergency Services.
Fire Emergency Services.
According to the best of my skills.
According to the best of my skills.
Abilities.
Abilities.
Judgment.
Judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome back. It's nice to have you back.
Thank you, sir.
Well, maybe you know more about this than I do, probably. I used to work one of these things, right? Been so far out of it now, I don't even know how to work a badge anymore. So I'm gonna, you, without hurting him now, okay? Don't hurt him. That young man looks like he's done that before.
Just once or twice. We may have practiced.
Again, Brian, welcome back.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
We come to our first section of public comment. I don't see where anybody has signed in. I haven't seen the sign in this, but is there anyone present that wishes to speak at public comment this evening? Okay, so we're gonna move right along and take a, first off, we're going to adopt the minutes and consent items, counsel. We got some minutes from the September 3rd, 2019 workshop. And the consent items are eight of them, or, I'm sorry, six of them.
Move adoption of the minutes and consent items?
Second.
The motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Here and not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So we've reached a point in this very short meeting we're gonna have tonight where we're gonna do, go into the business part of the meeting. I know a lot of you have come tonight for the presentations, and instead of making you sit through all that, I'm gonna give you the chance, you know, a few minutes, if you wanna go ahead and leave, this would be a good time to do it. You're welcome to stay as long as you want. But I'm giving you this chance to make a run for it. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and resume now. And this will bring us to a public hearing. We have here number seven on the agenda for tonight. And this is a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. And this will be amendments to Article 5.1, Off-Street Parking, Loading, and Circulation Planning. Director of Planning and Inspections, Ryan King, will be presenting this item. Ryan?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. This evening, as you just stated, we have a Unified Development Ordinance text amendment focusing on Article 5.1, which is our off-street parking requirements. There's two issues that we want to take up with City Council this evening, and it pertains to, number one, parking surface requirements for smaller areas, which include single-family. And the second item deals with maintenance versus restoration or reconfiguration. City staff has evaluated the ordinance and the impacts that this creates. We decided that it was worthy of bringing it forth to the planning board and City Council for consideration. At their meeting in August the 12th, the planning board recommended approval of this amendment. And to kind of highlight the items, currently, the Unified Development Ordinance allows parking areas that are 1,000 square feet or less to be paved with a crushed stone surface, gravel, or other suitable material. We're proposing that these areas will now be required to be surfaced with asphalt, concrete, brick, stone, pavers, or an equivalent material approved by the city manager or his or her designate. We do have a proposed exemption, which would be utilities, things such as lift stations, cell phone towers, power stations, substations, basically unmanned facilities. They would be able to have a gravel driveway, except for the first 15 feet, that will have to be paved, and that's pretty standard for both the city and NCDOT. So that's the first part. The second thing, due to some issues that have come up recently, we felt that it was needed that we bring some clarity on some recent issues. And we basically want to differentiate the two items as maintenance and reconfiguration. The first part would be maintenance, which is where you have folks that will go out and reseal, restripe parking lot in its existing and current configuration. No permits proposed with that. They're allowed to maintain their parking lot. The second piece would be reconfigurations, which deals with expansions and design changes. That would require a zoning permit to ensure that all of the necessary standards are complied with. At this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the City Council may have of me at this time.
Mr. King?
Just a, just a quick one. The, you eliminate crushed stone, but you allow stone. What did you have in mind there in these? You've got stone, you've got concrete, brick, stone, and the pavers.
Yeah, I think that basically allows us to consider items that are basically not dust, that don't create dust. I think that there's some, I can't remember the term, but we had an engineer that basically provided some information on bigger stone, that the dust won't be there and it compacts more so than the dust with the gravel and ABC stone.
Would we need to strike?
We certainly can do that.
It sounds a little ambiguous to me, but, you know, I'm certainly not an expert on that, but... I mean, yeah, I would think that you might want to define stone so that you, it's clear that you're talking, are you talking about a precast stone, or are you talking about a, like a number 67, or a, or some of the larger ones, like railroad ballast, or whatever, you know?
The example, I think, was some sort of a granite-type chip.
I would suggest that we strike it, because if you notice, it gives flexibility in the proposal, so it says, or an equivalent material approved by. So I think for clarity, let's strike that.
What brought this to our attention, Ryan? I mean...
Well, there was, there was two things. We've had some housing that basically did not pave their driveway, which is kind of standard and typical. And we've also had some resealing, restriping, resurfacing. And the current language in the Unified Development Ordinance made it very unclear on whether a permit was needed or not. And we don't want to discourage people from maintaining their existing parking lots by making them have to come in and get a zoning permit when all they're doing is basically going back the way that it was.
I mean, on that, this evening, we did intend to have a rezoning over on Arnold. That's been postponed to October 22nd. There was a duplex that was built on Arnold, and in building that duplex, the person who built it took out an existing unit, which was a single-family home. Actually, I think it was a mobile home, but it was a single unit. The area was zoned multiple family, so they put a duplex in. The driveways that that person put in were nothing but dirt driveways. And that brought to our attention that our ordinance has that exclusion in it, and we don't believe that builds a good-quality neighborhood. So that's what actually brought this up.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, counsel.
Right, counsel, we're required to have a public hearing in this matter, so at this time, I'll recess the regular council meeting, open up a public hearing in this, in this particular item. Is anyone present that wishes to speak to this matter? So please indicate by raising your hand. I see no one, so I'm gonna close the public hearing, reconvene the regular council meeting. Counsel, you've been asked to consider the Unified Development Ordinance text amendment with the change proposed.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the Unified Zoning Text Amendment as amended tonight.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to item number eight. This is a voluntary annexation petition, and this is actually Thornwood LLC, Circle K. And this will be presented by Mr. Massey, our Assistant City Manager.
Mayor and counsel, on behalf of Thornwood LLC, the Timmins Group has submitted a petition for a voluntary annexation of 6.056-acre parcel that is contiguous to the current city limit boundaries. The tract is located at the intersection of Gum Branch and Western Boulevard. The developers are proposing to build a one-story, 5,000-plus-square-foot, Circle K convenience store and gas station. A site plan for the project has been submitted to the Planning and Inspections Department. The cost and revenues are, have been analyzed. The financial analysis shows a positive net cash flow over the five-year review period. Staff recommends the council adopt the annexation ordinance as presented.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Massey? Thank you.
Well, looking at it just now, it's annexing part of the parcel, so it's gonna have to be subdivided, or is it just...
No, it's annexing that whole parcel there.
Oh, that's, that's three parcels?
It's just annexing the striped parcel there, which part of that is gonna be a common stormwater pond. The other will come in when it is actually developed, but it's just, it's part of a larger parcel, just an annexation there.
But it's three separate parcels, or it's just part of one parcel? That's what I understand.
It's part of one entire parcel.
So it's not...
So it'll end up being three or more annexations by the, by the dividing line there.
Is, is the financial analysis then based on the entire parcel, or just, just that portion that they're gonna develop right now?
Well, I do have some questions about the financials, but we'll do that later. Okay.
Yeah, we wanted to make sure there was no Clemson math involved in this thing, sir.
Now may be the appropriate time to do it, Mr. Thomas.
Yes. Well, it's just the analysis that was presented to us was, didn't strike me as meeting the common sense rule, I guess is what you could say. I mean, it was, you know, valued at $10 million, and I didn't see that valuation in this, you know, what we got in front of us. I mean, that's just, just a comment. And it's not gonna impact whether I've supported it or do, of course, but it just struck me as inconsistent.
Can the finance director contact you and review it with you?
That'd be great.
Yeah, because the calculations were done based on the information provided from the developer. We can go back and, and review that. If the costs are lower, it still will be a positive.
Oh, sure, yeah. I mean, I'm, there's nothing to make me not support it, it's just, like I said...
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Massey. Counsel, we're being required to conduct a public hearing in this matter. I'll recess the regular council meeting, open the public hearing. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak to this matter? So please raise your hand. So I see no one, so I've closed the public hearing, reconvene the council meeting, and we're being asked to consider the annexation ordinance.
Mayor Phillips, I'll make the motion to adopt the annexation ordinance since presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Here and not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have item number nine. And this is a local water supply plan and water shortage response plan update. Wally Hanson, our Public Services Director, will present this item. Wally?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. I have two items for you this evening. Both are water-related plans that are required by the state of North Carolina. The first is our water supply plan. This plan is actually a digital submittal through a state website. We have been doing this for probably the last 10 to 12 years. There's a little drop-down box on the right-hand side you can see. You can actually go back to at least 10 years, and look at this. This plan's never been before you, because literally is a form-filled plan that we just answer the questions. But this year, when we submitted it for 2018, the state came back and requested that we bring it to City Council for approval and provided the attached resolution in your agenda. So that's why it's before you tonight. Again, this plan is required annually. It is posted to the state's website. It has four primary components. Those components include the entire system, water system information. It includes our water use information, and then our water supply, and then even some wastewater information. So I'll just step through those briefly. Under system information, they're looking for major system components, such as how much storage does the system have? And as you're aware, we have 5.4 million gallons of storage in all of our elevated storage tanks and in our ground storage tank at the water treatment plant. It asks for our length of lines, our line types, and then the percentage that those lines make up our total system, and then it asks for... And then it asks for line sizes. And then last in that section, it actually talks about the type of programs that we have, such as our cross-connection program, you know, our backflow program, our educational programs, where we reach out into the community, and some of our other things, such as our water conservation kits that we give out. The second portion of that plan is, covers again, our water usage. It is, it covers the population served. And if you look in there, that's basically the population served per the census data. And we have also meter types, so it's broken down by residential, commercial, and institutional, which I don't think we really have any that meet the institutional requirements. Most of ours are, or actually all of ours are either residential or considered commercial and fall into the commercial category. And then it talks about emergency connections. We do, as you're aware, we have several interconnections with Onwasa for emergency purposes. So it covers, this section covers all of those type of information. Again, it's a, it's literally a form fill where we're answering questions. Once we get into the third section, it actually is quite more detailed. It gets into what our monthly withdrawal is, and then it actually breaks it down per well. So you can see all of the wells in both our Castle Hain and our Black Creek Aquifers. And then it gets into whether we purchase water from anyone. And as you're aware, we do have the interconnects with Onwasa. There's agreement there. So if we have to, if we have an emergency and we need to purchase water, then we can get it from Onwasa. In addition, we also have areas where the city is annexed over time. And good examples of this would be Country Club and Sunset Acres. We don't actually supply the water in that area. Onwasa supplies that water. So in the plan, you'll actually see a note that says that. And then last is wastewater information. And this wastewater information talks about our permit numbers, what our capacity is. And it also has some interesting projections in it, if you noticed. What I will say, those projections go out to the year 2060, I believe, and we don't generate those. Those are actually generated by the software that the state uses, by the information that we've submitted. So those are not our projections. They're not, they're actually, you know, generated off of the information that we've supplied to the state. As you're well aware, we do master planning efforts for our wastewater system so that we're very closely monitoring where we are, what we'll need as we're growing. So, you know, but those projections are part of the program, so they are part of our plan. So I wanted to make you aware of that, especially being that they go out to 2060. So with that, you know, again, this is a draft that has been submitted to the state. They've accepted it. They've said that it meets all of their requirements, or at least all of their basic requirements. They will review it further once we've submitted your approval and the resolution that they've requested. And lastly, we took this to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, and they recommended approval to you. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the water supply plan.
Counsel, some questions, Wally?
All right. Then I'll move on to the water shortage response plan. This plan is also required by the state. What I will say, this differs from the previous plan, whereas that plan was a form-filled plan. This is a plan that is based off of session law, but it is the city of Jacksonville's Water Shortage Response Plan. It does require periodic updates, which is why it's before you tonight. Our last plan was adopted in June, I believe, of 2012. And the plan basically is required to have the things on the screen in front of you, but I'll just run through them real quickly. Basically, the session law says that we have to have tiered levels of conservation based on whatever the severity of a drought or a water shortage is. And those tiers must be specifically defined, and they must be progressively more stringent than the previous tier. And then it cannot be dependent upon any one person, a public official or governing body. Basically, the adopted plan is what triggers the water shortage and the actions of the plan. And then lastly, we cannot regulate private drinking water wells, which I'm not aware of any in our system. We do have some private wells, but most of those are either irrigation or, you know, a Florida heat pump style or something like that. But the state permits those, the state regulates those. We are not allowed to regulate those. So if a water shortage happened and anything had to happen with a private well, that would be done by the state, not by the city of Jacksonville. So with that, I'll jump into the plan briefly. There's, our plan has five levels. It goes from voluntary all the way down to basically water rationing. And when we get to water rationing, we're talking about essential life, health, safety-type usage of water. From there, the plan basically steps through levels. We have two mandatory restrictions, so a kind of a level one and a level two, and I'll talk about those in a minute. And then we're getting into more critical, which is your emergency. As I mentioned, the plan has to have triggers. So this kind of outlines the triggers. And what it says is the pumping time of wells, which is where the capacity is derived for, dictates when we have to move into water conservation. The other, so that would be our supply. So if we're going through a drought and there's a shortage in supply, that's where this first column would come into play. The second would be water usage or demand, where we have high demand for successive periods, and our periods are five days. So if we exceed 10%, which I'll give you the numbers in just a second, if we have demand, 10% of our normal average daily demand for consecutive five days, then we have to look at going into voluntary. So what those numbers actually look like, the city of Jacksonville is permitted to pump 7.59 million gallons per day across our entire well field. That's both the Black Creek and the Castle Hain Aquifers. The safe yield is derived by the capacity of those wells to pump for 12 hours on and then rest for 12 hours. So the 24-hour period can only include 12 hours of pumping for any given well. So the way we run our wells is actually in rotation. So we try to spread those out. We don't run every well every day. What we try to do is spread the wells and the well field out, and we have certain wells that run better with other wells. So we try to operate those together. And secondly, if you recall from our previous plan, we have 5.4 million gallons of storage. So we can more than handle our normal daily demand with storage. But then we're pumping for recovery throughout the day. And we're pumping for, you know, normal usage activities such as fire flows through hydrants. We have street sweeping operations. We have fire training, you know, actual fires that we have water usage. And then we actually have blow-offs that we are required to do at each of our wells. So those are all covered in our usage, but it's all encompassed in that 7.59 number. So then you can see what the capacity rates of each of those different tiers are. And in my research, I went back and I was not able to find at any point where we had to go into any mandatory restrictions because of a water shortage. The closest thing I found, and I only found notes, was somewhere in the early 2000s. I think we went into a voluntary, but it predated the plan that we have now. So, and if you remember, there was a time period where Durham was actually counting the days of water that they had. We were impacted, but not to that severity because, again, we use groundwater wells instead of surface water. The other is water usage. This, in my opinion, would be what would get us before water shortage because we do have good capacity compared to what our daily usage is. So our base rate would be 3.8 million gallons per day. That number comes from our 2018 average daily demand. So for 2018, if you take all of our highs, all of our lows of water usage, it averaged out to 3.8 million gallons per day. So you can see if we go 10% above that, we're at 4.18 million gallons per day. We hit that quite frequently. The difference is, we really don't typically hit that over five consecutive days. Matter of fact, this year, we've only been close once, and I believe it was in the May timeframe. We went through a long drought. It was really hot. Matter of fact, I think Pender County actually had to implement their water shortage response plan, and I believe Onwasa was seeing extremely high usage as well. I think we got close for four or five days, but then we immediately dropped back down. Now, in operational, we can watch those things because we can coordinate with the fire department on when they do training activities, when they go around and fire flow and test some of our hydrants. And during that period, the fire chief actually made contact with us and said, you know, we are watching the water issue. Are there any concerns? And we didn't have any, so we continued normal operations. But we never got to the point where we would have had to have triggered even voluntary water reduction. So with that, there are some actions required for the plan. Once we get into those different levels, I've got them on the matrix in front of you. I won't go over all of them. I'll just touch on a few. The first one I'd like to touch on is the conservation devices. You know, this is kind of a plug for our utility billing department. We keep water conservation kits at our utility billing department. We give them out for free. They have low-flow showerheads and tank tablets, so you can find out if your toilet's leaking, something for your faucet, for your sink to restrict the flow. And again, we give those out for free. So, you know, this is my plug to, if you don't have some of those devices, you know, please come and we will help you out with that. Next, everybody's interested probably most in washing cars and watering lawns. And, you know, what we say in voluntary is, you know, we request that you limit those things. You know, your car, we would prefer that you take to a car wash because most of those have some sort of water recycling facility. If you prefer to do it at home, we would request that you do it on your lawn, so you get the benefits of water in your lawn and washing your car. And it does, the lawn does help treat the stormwater runoff or the water runoff from the washing of your vehicle. But as you can see, once you get to the level two and three, where you're getting into mandatory requirements, we say that you have to go to one of those commercial facilities because, again, they do use that water recycling. And then in levels four and five, we don't allow it, period, including at commercial facilities. Watering lawns, again, the voluntary, we request that people would minimize how they water their lawn and their vegetation. It does not restrict commercial nurseries and, you know, Lowe's and Home Depot. And, but what it does say is that they should use irrigation drip-type systems that, you know, do a better job of water actually penetrating instead of just a sprinkler-type system where you water everything. And then that gets more restrictive as it goes. And once you get into level three and higher, basically, we say only use what's vital to use for those, and we're really talking commercial establishments at that point. And then the last one, and I'd like to, well, the last two I'd like to touch on are the last two, and that's firefighting. Obviously, that is a life safety issue. We would never restrict firefighting. We would restrict training if we had to, but we would never restrict water usage related to firefighting. And then second, or the last is the drought surcharge. If you'll notice in the plan, the voluntary level and level one mandatory does not have any surcharges in the rate. But if you'll notice, on level three through five, there are increasing surcharges for usage above that base rate. And at level three, I think it's one and a half times the normal volumetric rate. And when you get to level five, it's five times the rate. So there are, you know, incentive, monetary incentives built into the plan for people to actually use the minimum, especially when we get to that level five. And then what happens if we don't or we don't have citizens that do comply? This is our requirements. For voluntary, again, it is voluntary, so we don't have any penalties. But under mandatory, you'll notice, we give a warning at first, and then we give a fine, and then we'll terminate service. But once we get to the emergency and the water rationing, it's a 250 for the first or a 500 under the highest level. And then we discontinue service after that. So if we have somebody that continues to water their lawn, then we can cut off their service. If we go back and they're doing it again, we can turn it off again. So we do have penalties for those that do not comply with the various levels. Last, I think what I'd like to say about the plan is that there are messages that would preempt all of this. The plan specifically lays out the measures that we would go through in notifying council, notifying the public, how we would handle enforcement. So all of those are laid out in the beginning stages of the plan. And then the plan also has a public comment period. We had a 30-day public comment. We did receive one comment, so I know at least one person out there read it. And it was actually a pretty insightful comment that I had not thought of. Part of the plan requires, as you get into the higher levels and we're trying to conserve water, that it requires the hand washing of dishes. Well, her comment was, you know, the plan was developed before all of these HE appliances, high-efficiency appliances. And her comment was, when I bought mine, it actually said that it uses less water than hand washing. That was one of the advertisements. So as we look at this in the future, that's probably one of those things that we want to come back and pick up and recognize. Last, we had, we've submitted this draft to the state. It's very minor changes. Really, the informational piece of how, about how we get information out to the public is the, is really the substance of this update because some of the way we did things back in 2012 have changed to today. And last, the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee has also recommended that council adopt this plan and carry it forward with the attached resolution. So that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Let me make one additional comment. As Wally mentioned, when you adopt this plan, you are also specifically authorizing the implementation of the plan. So if a drought exists, there is no legislative action. By adopting the plan, it sets forth the standards that will be implemented. So you're a future council, because certainly we hope that this council and this community doesn't face a drought in the near future. But again, by adopting it, you are in fact authorizing the future implementation of it without any additional legislative action. And that takes obviously the politics. It takes the emotion out of it because the numbers are what will be determining the specific stages. Obviously, as Wally said, we will be informing you, we'll be informing the public.
An additional point I'd like to clarify and correct me if I'm wrong, but I remember during the discussion at the Water and Sewer Advisory that the reductions imposed are only on those folks that exceed the base rate. Is that correct? The 2,000 gallons?
Those would be, those would be the people that we would target the most because they're obviously using.
What I'm saying, if you use less than 2,000, aren't you pretty much out of this reduction territory or not?
If you use less than 2,000? If you use, if you use less than 2,000, you are out of paying a higher rate for the water you do use. But that doesn't, we would still hope that if somebody could, even if they use less than 2,000, if they could use less, then we, we would hope that they would still continue to use less or try to use less. But we don't have, we don't have the monetary enforcement like we do for those that are, that get into that higher than 2,000, that volumetric rate.
Thank you. Counselor, you're being asked to consider the approval of the water supply plan and the corresponding resolution, as well as the updated water storage response plan and the corresponding resolution.
Mayor Phillips, I make a motion to adopt the water supply plan and an updated water shortage response plan, as noted.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold opposed. That brings us to our comp, our report section for the evening, and I'll start with Mr. Jackson.
No report.
Mr. Pitt.
Onwassa will be meeting Thursday evening, and I'll be attending that. And so far, there are no items of business that directly affect the city.
Ms. Washington.
No report.
Mr. Thomas.
I just want to say thanks to Wally and Carrie and all the streets and folks that got out after the little bit of hurricane we had last week and picking up the yard waste this week. I thought they did a great job with a little bit of extra that was out there. Really appreciate it.
We, we weathered the storm.
That's right.
Mr. Ward.
Are you going to bring up the elected officials meeting in your report? And your plan too? I mean, I've just.
You talked about the joint meeting.
Yeah, the one we had, no, no, the, the meeting that we had last Friday with the base.
Oh, that one, okay. I hadn't planned on it, so if you want to mention that, that's fine. Since you were there.
Yeah, the mayor and Councilman Jackson and myself, and, and Ron and Anthony represented the city. I don't think I forgot anybody, but good turnout from all of the various other municipalities as well as the county. We met with the general and some of his staff and Major General Alfred, he's the commanding general of the Marine Corps Installations East. And basically, we got an update on some, some construction projects that are coming out to Lejeune over the next five years, most of them in response to Hurricane Florence damages. And I've been hearing 3.2 billion, but this package you gave me only had like 1.7 in there. But if it's 3.2 billion, we're talking $2 million a day in construction, being built daily over roughly a five, five-year period. So that's significant, and hopefully, the contractors, as well as the citizens of Ozawa County will benefit from all of that construction. Hopefully, housing and food, restaurants, and as well as the payroll. Hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to do some of the construction work out there. So anyway, it was a good meeting. I think it was a nice give and take, and I think we've got a commanding general that's willing to listen and willing to give some answers for us. So he said that he would like to continue to do that meeting, and I hope he does. I think at some point, I think it's of value to, to both them as well as us. And it, it, it serves to remind people that even though there may be a fence around Camp Lejeune, it doesn't, the effects of what goes on out there, as well as what goes on on this side, they mingle, and, and the fence doesn't magically stop what, what goes on out there. And I think the more we continue to work together and cooperate together, I think the better the, the citizens of Ozawa County and, and the surrounding areas will do. So that was it, sir, unless you have something to add to it.
I was, I was amazed by some of the numbers, like you said, the, the amount that it pumps into the local economy each year, plus, you know, the number of jobs, civilian jobs that are created aboard Camp Lejeune, which, yeah, that was a big number, 60, I think it was 6,700 jobs on the base. That's big industry.
It is.
Anyway, Dr. Booker, your report.
Members of the council, we have several items under the One City moment that we'd like to cover. Before we, now that we're covering the One City moment, the first is service to our neighboring municipalities. As you're aware, Emerald Isle was hit by a tornado. And we have some slides that we'll show you. City crews, we sent them down there. Wally and his staff went down with the street department. New Bern also sent equipment. And we did several days' worth of removal of the various debris, especially in the Mobile Home Park. Here are a couple of our city employees. We also have the, the Hero Mile. This weekend marks the fourth year of the Hero Mile. The project places remembrances of those who have died in service to our country since 9/11. This weekend was the annual Marine Corps Half Marathon. More than 1,200 runners signed up for the event. A mile along Brewster Boulevard near Paradise Point hosted the display, and you can see the faces, names, and information about the people who have protected our country who have died in action. Any person who would like to nominate someone to be included in next year's Hero Mile, if they will contact visitjacksonvillenc.com, visitjacksonvillenc.com, or simply call City Hall, and we'll give them further information. The most recent Marine killed in action was Marine Gunny Sergeant Scott A. Koppenhofer. He was honored in the Hero Mile. He was a MAR SOC member who died in action August 11th, 2019. In addition to that, we would draw your attention to the joint session, which the mayor and the chairman have agreed to between the city council and the county commission, that will occur in this chamber, open to the public, September 30th, which is a Monday, at 4:00 PM. One of our scouts who is with us this evening is also, Jackson LaSalle, is working on an Eagle project. Many of you have probably noticed that up in the commons, fairly close to the EOC, there is some clearing going on. And the Eagle Scout project includes the installation of a number of exercise units. These are professionally built, and they'll be installed by the Eagle Scout and his scouts, many of whom are here today, and of course, with the city crew. But we expect that to occur, Jackson, in September, I mean, in October?
Late October.
Late October, early November. And we would encourage you to come out and be part of the workforce, or at least come out and enjoy them. But they're going to be very visible, they'll be right along the sidewalk area there, and it'll be something so that if you're a runner or a biker or just like to walk, it'd be a great exercise opportunity. As always, Mayor, and members of council, we'd like to thank you for your leadership. While we were very fortunate that we did not have substantial damage from Dorian, it could have been. The staff was prepared under your leadership. We appreciate the support. Many of you spent several hours in the, in the EOC, and we truly support that. One question that has come up has to do with the debris damage. I'll be sending you an email in the morning asking you to authorize certain actions relative to the removal of that debris. Again, thank you for your leadership.
Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir.
I've asked Glenn to pull back up, if he could, the annexation map. I want to give a little more clarifying information. I thought Ryan had gone back to his office and done a couple of things. He's been texting me, but he's actually done it from sitting right there in the audience. It's amazing, folks, how to do it. Let me point out, you see where Western Boulevard is, and it comes into Gum Branch Road, which Gum Branch Road is not written on there, okay? And someone is pointing. But the actual service station will go at the, the front, there's on Gum Branch Road. The part there to, on Western Boulevard, that's where the service station goes. The part there on the back is where the common, L part of that, Glenn, is where the, not that, the top part, right there, that's where the common stormwater pond will go. And then the other line there is a sanitary sewer main and easement. The surveyor has actually submitted, and always submits, an actual meets and bounds description, and that's how we actually put it up there on the map. Ryan informs me that they will, of course, subdivide, but that will be done by administrative procedure. That won't be by action of council. Ryan, looking at another Circle K, and this will be a Circle K service station, believes it's just a typo. Now, if there's something different, we'll let you know. Instead of 10 million, it should be $1 million. But again, we, we will, we'll verify that. See any change in that, we'll let you know. But I wanted to give that clarifying information for you. But I think you did the right thing, bringing it into the city. Thank you.
Of course, on the other hand, if you notice the price of gasoline going up today, it may actually be a $10 million project.
That's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?